I've done anything different at all. It just.
That being going off middle. Right, thank you very much, Shane, we started slightly late tonight. Technical errors and problems, but well, I'd like to work in order to count events and events, we've got quite a pan agenda. And I'm sure we'll work through it, particularly your problems we can, which item one apologies for absence.
Apologies from council, we have some laundry.
We've got any other apologies, Shane, or no, no, not invited.
First receptionist, Charlie.
Yeah, and agree?
Yeah.
Okay, decorations for interest, hopefully you're all interested. And minutes of the last meeting, and you want two seconds to look at those before we agree. You happy with that?
Agreed, yeah.
Agree then? Right, excellent. I'm writing along with Wendy, we want to definitely look at the action, if we want to come through the latest tension.
I suppose just a query rather than anything, under comedy night, I noticed this when I went through.
Yeah.
It's got November twenty three against it, but we've got a date in the forthcoming events, which is in advance of November twenty three, I think.
I was just thinking that should say November twenty two.
Oh, okay.
What we, what we are doing is we're looking at. And we want to know that it will go again and come back to the meeting.
Yeah.
But thank you for picking that up. Obviously, the arts event is on the agenda, so we'll talk about that. And most actually in the agenda, you happy to, as a committee, to know that?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Um, this is on five, this is the report on. Bonfire, I think, until we've all looked through. Amanda, do you want to take this, make me through that briefing? They thought you were lame, weren't they? And eleven hundred.
Bonfire fireworks, this is actually on the fifth of November, on the visual place, Bolton Park. Titanium fireworks will be providing firework display. We're going to have a scaled down bonfire this year. I will be looking to see if there's any councils that would like to carry torches, I think we've got ten torches. Um, so if anybody here wants to carry one, if you can let me know. Um, by the end of the week. Um, we've got some entertainment this year. What do you call her?
Jean-Claire, she's a sort of sire dancer.
Yeah.
And N E D dancer.
Yeah, we met with her last Thursday, wasn't it?
Yeah.
She's very nice, we met her in Bournemouth Park and she explained what she does, um, we sort of. Went over the site with her and she's picked out the area, um, that she thinks would be best for her display. So she said, good. Got Silverstone Brewery doing the bar. Um, James and Lorraine are doing Chantebert, doing Donuts on purpose, and we've got Tri and Chili doing pizza. Um, David's side with his sweets. That's it. I hope you'll all come out and.
I've got Lisa and. And Grant.
No, I was just saying, I'd kind of talk. Thank you. Um, now, there was, there was, um, a post on Facebook showing either Audi or Lidl were doing, um, Bangless fireworks. So I wondered if Titanium had been asked this year, because it has been a topic that has come up numerous years. I know it has ever since I've had dogs, which was many years ago now. Um, and it's been a hot topic, obviously on the socials. So I wondered if, um, a conversation had been had with Titanium this year about, uh, Bangless fireworks.
No, not at all, because we discussed it last year.
I know, that's why I asked this, yeah.
Last year, and. Every time, and that's not what we've got a contact with them to do, and. And it's, um, once in our fireworks, and one of the things which I think, to the degree of our fireworks, that we do our fireworks, probably limits. No matter what little garden firework, but I mean, we can put it on agenda, potentially discuss it, I think if you want to discuss it. Um, I think we might have many people wondering why they're Banglesses and they are Bangless. Uh, um, but, um. I mean, we can ask them, but I don't think at this stage of the game we could change the order.
Not for this year, I was just asking if there'd been conversations this year about Bangless, not that they would do them this year.
We still talked about it in meetings, I think we did that in a meeting, and we decided not to go for it.
We did speak to Titanium about it last year, did Amanda, their view was that the technology isn't really there and they're a bit disappointed in that. And they're something we'll obviously think about, that's hopefully the technology gets a bit better. But you need the bang to make it.
That's, that's right, if I can come back, that's, that's why I asked about this year specifically, because last year things weren't good. And this year, obviously, things have moved on as technology, as stuff does. So that is why I thought I'd raise it, because it has been a topic for many years. That if somebody doesn't ask a question, then we might be asked why we are not discussing it at all. So I'm just doing my kind of duty as a councillor.
I know you are, I know you are.
I was, I was just going to say that I think that, um, the current. Um, less noisy, I don't, I don't think they're completely silent, but they're less noisy. Um, fireworks tend to be, um, things that would show suitable for back gardens rather than, um, for public displays. Um, you wouldn't get, um, the. Big showing fireworks for people to go in and out of, um, without the, as classes of the explosion in the first place to, to send them. Twenty, forty, fifty, whatever feet up in the air, yeah.
Yeah.
You would first, you second wise carrier. Talk, see if we can record and see what's going on. Have you, you, I, on the fireworks?
Well, I, I think as Fran says, they would be rather damp squits.
So if we minute the.
Sorry, I'm like when, when, um, we used to organise fireworks in Chapel. And we did use to try and get the less noisy ones. Um. But we were just, we were spying them from a reseller and making certain they were back in his van, so.
See, again, Titanium are a big firework company, they might be able to access different fireworks. So I think it's worth asking a question and, um, minoting that we are at least discussing it again.
What would be useful is we put a minute of the discussion.
Yeah.
At Town Clerk, but in here, that we've discussed it, rather than on their discussions, everything changes.
Yeah.
At the moment, uh, we only have a budget to whatever, and any time you change a budget, I'm sure that the new things won't be as cheap as the older things.
We don't know.
We don't know.
That's a problem.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Everything changes, so we're just really, it's, it's back and there, anything to act on.
No, just to emphasise, I think one of the main drivers for us doing the bonfire and fireworks is to reduce the number of people letting off fireworks elsewhere. Which, again, is probably better for the environment than if loads of people were doing it, and it's also safety, isn't it? Because I can remember loads of people being injured, and my own children included, when, um, people used to do it in back gardens. And I think it's so much better, you feel safer, and it's a lovely free event for the whole community. And I think we, we, you know, we need to bear that in mind, because if we did go for the Bangless and it wasn't successful, then, um. The next year we might find a lot more accidents because people are doing it of their own bat, and I think that's what we need to avoid doing.
Definitely.
Just to make clarity, historical councillors, Pauline Stevens, she used to be on the town council, and, uh. And she used to have to raise money to do the fireworks on a regular occasion, do lots of charity events, and it become. Unachievable for Paulie, doing that's why the town council took on the fireworks for very reason, the mayor said, safety. Appropriate wearability, that it was managed, you know, the rules are moving faster than Paulie could do or volunteer. The town council move forward, we have to move with the rules and the times that they are, so we happy with that to agree the report?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, item six, um, to remember this, um, today, um, didn't intend that, so having it. Um, leaving, um, I would do to then give apologise, I didn't have to get there, so I was, I was intended to have it. The, the report got a letter which is signed by Lisa, which is, um, never under our understanding. Um, it was good to do. Um, very concerned with doing that report. About what it is, are we happy with that report, is the manual, and you through, super stuff.
Sorry. Um, just to say that, um, if it hasn't already, all councillors need to see it. Because they're not all on T C and A, and we do have that bit, the, as we're walking back, when nobody quite, I want to go, we, we know, because we've done it for too many years. But you, we do have that where it's like, oh, they're going that way and they're going that way, so I think we, we need that refresh of all councillors. This is what, what we do, this is where we go, it's just the mayor, and most where, go that way, we all funnel down.
They're going to be sent a copy of the protocols, love.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Would, may I agree with you taking on to, that's nine point, that we send a map of where the councillors stand.
I do.
Because it appears the councillors, not in terms of inventories where they stand as well.
Still a bit.
Um, and, um, and we also perhaps should send that to the local tenants' office, um. And those, as well as, they know that when they get up there, this is a spot that has been agreed.
And so one of the things that was discussed in the meetings, that we're going to try and have a sort of shuffle lane to encourage the people who are watching to move past, they're more and more able to go. To, um, where the screen is, so that they can see better. Um, and I think we do that, sort of an amended diagram that shows the shuffle lane, so that everyone understands.
Yeah.
Everyone's involved on the staff, what's going to happen there.
I think to believe from the conversation that the, uh, uh, councillor, no longer councillor, is going to be, um, in charge of the shuffle lane, so. I think that they'll probably be able to hear clearly that where they've got to go. Um, um, so that will be, um, interesting.
We need some barriers.
We need some barriers and we'll put that down, no barriers, I think, but what I was advised was what happened is barriers will go away after and they get picked up later. Um, but we happy with that, and we agree that all members of the council get a copy of the, who attended, and can we send it to. Those Buckinghamshire councillors who aren't on town council as well, so they know where, you do have these sort of flocking of people.
Yeah.
Throughout and standing in all different sorts of places, and our place is to support the mayor.
Yeah.
And their place is supporting the local tenant and everybody else is basically additional to that. Um, those two people, really. Um.
Yeah, great.
But we're going to agree to do that.
Great.
And ask them to acknowledge that they received it. Um, you know, acknowledging and receiving it, just trying to make it a bit tidy from our point of view. It makes it closer space up and allows more space for everybody out.
Absolutely right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
It was, it was a different year last year, it was really the first time and, and, yeah, it was like. Learn, learning from that experience, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, are we happy with that then, with those suggestions, that we were suggesting, that we're going to send that? Yeah, well, that's great, yeah, thank you.
Um, just ask whether it'd be worth, um, ask, when you send it out, asking councillors to indicate whether they're planning to come or not. Or if their plan is to help with the road closure, that we know.
Yes, because normally I will, um, some of them will come back, particularly John Harvey or, um, councillor Cole will come back and say yes or no for coming in. Sue's very good at that as well.
Okay.
But yeah, I can ask them to confirm whether or not they've been being prayed or helping with the road closure.
Because it will be, it's, it's grown, hasn't it, as an event, and there is reasons, it's difficult to give this year, we have a team now of Queen.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, first year with the magistrate, the magistrate, um, so that's changed. Okay, well, thank you for that, and we'll move on to item seven, which is its more business report, which is attached. And who's going to take us through that more business, um, trail for? Okay, Rita, who is he taking, who does background behind that?
Um, so there's a small bit from Saturday every early December, it's a huge opportunity to promote. Small businesses because they are, potentially, they can get a lot of customers in February. And this, uh, is sort of a related concept. And essentially that the, um. Um, such an extensive manager has come up with, so she's, um, worked with lots of the local shops that they, that they've agreed to take part. It'll be a shop, a trail that encourages people to go into individual shops or look in the window, identify something. And then they can enter a competition and there'll be a prize for a random winner. And for the opening, they're going to do it at the Saturday market and plan is that there'll be a, a children's festive character, so maybe an elf or a lap or something like that. That was really popular in market entertainment in summer, so that would be a good draw. Just trying to get others to come along and take part, and it's, um, not that expensive.
Nothing.
I didn't see at all.
Obviously we'll, um, invite Buckingham there to spend the prize. Um, that'd be nice if you put that down. Um, but it just always showed that we're a little bit to make trade in the town of interest.
Yeah. Great.
You'll find that some of us are a lot more of these types of things, because we work for the year. So, um. Find everybody inviting more, testing, um, that the will to do it is definitely there. Well, thank you for that, I'm happy to agree.
I'm sure, yeah.
Okay.
But we have a.
Yeah.
Top place. Yep.
That's it. That's it, I know it's amazing, there's a bit of muck in there. Back in, isn't it? Um, um, right, okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is, um, town centre damage. You'll see there's a report response to, um, the mayor's correspondence, I guess, which of course, um. One of those sort of responses, you can read it in whichever way you would prefer to read it. Um. I don't think it's actually that they're going to do anything in great work. Um, and it, it sort of, um, seems to be prioritising things or whatever, and I noted that they copied it into. Everybody in Buckingham East, Buckinghamshire Council, but didn't actually copy it into the, um, other two councils in Buckingham West. Who actually still, the community still needs a town centre, so I think we'll, I'll take that priority, but, um, but, um. I don't think less than impressed, I don't think, what I can be the same.
Agreed with your comments. I think, I think it's par for the course, really, isn't it? Unfortunately.
We do know, really, that, 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 that money is short, but these issues to do with the town centre haven't come around in one year. They've come around in successive years, so if they started solving some of these historical problems, we'd date back for two, three years.
Yeah.
Um, and we just see this, there's no schedule works. To say that this is, that we're going to actually allocate this amount of money and over repair it for two, three years, we're going to do it. They basically said that we, that they're going to do this like a, um, a road repair. I am concerned because, um, we have evidence of people falling over, um, regularly in the town centre.
From London.
Councillor Rand Davies tripped over.
I didn't fall over, though.
You didn't fall over. When, only the other day when we were actually doing a job of work in the town centre, we weren't just walking around the roads. Um. I don't know what we want to do about it, I think, would, we agree that we'd be satisfied with it, and would we agree that we should do something about communicating our dissatisfaction? Um, listen.
Thank you. Some of these do date back, uh, to when we did our, um, accessible awareness tour around the town centre. And, and roads around Well Street, and these were picked up that long ago. So I am incredibly unimpressed with this, and as, as you rightly said, Chairman, that we've not been given any dates, it's just within our schedule of works. Brilliant, what does that mean for the residents of Buckingham, the ones that are falling over or tripping on curbs? Um, or struggling to push people in wheelchairs.
Yeah.
As I said, um, a couple of weeks ago, with a member of staff from Hamilton House having to take a resident to the dentist. And she struggled incredibly because of the state of the pavements. Um, so I'm just, yeah, very unimpressed with this.
Susan.
Yeah, so I, I can't really add to that, yeah.
Madam.
Well, I suppose, because I'm a cup half full person, I read that first bullet point is that, that they're, um. They might do it fairly soon, but maybe it would be really good if they'd been more specific about time scales. Because we need to know whether this is going to be done next week or next year or the year after, I mean, they're talking about twenty twenty four, don't they?
Well, twenty.
Which is quite alarming.
Yeah.
I, I think, yeah, that, that suggests that, um.
I was going to say, especially with, with, um, um, current Giga Clear, et cetera.
Yeah.
Um, um, Swish Fiber, whoever else, doing things that are not putting things back. Um. Um, Flush, which I think is the, the, one of the major issues. Um. Yeah, how like the, trying to push a wheelchair around the town is, is tough work, really tough work.
That's where it came from, accessibility that we have. Are we agreed then, I guess that we, um. The press release are disappointed that there's no definite time to do the works. I'm concerned that some of these. Works today have got historical. Um, they date back quite a long time, as councillor Donal says, and the, Buckingham being, um. Major market town in the north with a large population of Audi and vulnerable people that. We hope that twenty twenty four date. Would be achievable, but we personally would have liked to, um, at least them to break down into a schedule of works. I think if they could come back to me and said, we're going to be spending ten thousand pounds or five thousand pounds over a rolling period, you'd know that they've got. They're never going to do everything, but you know they've got a programme of works to actually do it, and there's no programme of works in there. But we agree that that would be something we'd be willing to press this on.
Yeah.
Um, um.
I think, I think we need to, um, make sure we, um, emphasise the, the number of trips and falls. Um, that these, um, uneven bits of pavement, et cetera, have caused.
Hmm.
Adam there.
Thank you, it refers to a meeting on the twenty ninth of September, have we had any feedback from that meeting?
Um, a meeting on the, a meeting on the twenty ninth of September. They were meeting it the first time.
And first to a meeting with the local area association, um, and the three councillors from Buckingham East Ward.
Well, being as, that they haven't communicated back to us, maybe must have been really successful, as they would have been back to us straight away, so, um, that's.
Flow, the flowing flags of what they've done.
Flying flags about what they've done, so, um, so I would take it that that meeting couldn't have been very successful, as they would have been back to us. And they have been copied into it, and they do know it was from here, they, and two of those, but all three of them, they're on the town council.
We can, um, we can answer it after that one. I can also double check, I haven't received anything, I'm pretty sure, but I'll double check.
I mean, I don't think we need to wait for them to respond, that's, then, if it was my other half, you should be challenging me to get it done. Um, really, um, we should be apologetic around just the three of them, make that charge, if they get this agenda, and now it's on the agenda, they could have emailed the town clerk to. Advisor of the outcome of that meeting.
But also, also the fact that, and like the, the, the letter is addressed to the clerk. And cc to the three councillors, well, you would have thought that, um, they would have been in contact with the clerk to, um.
I, I will do that.
You'd hope, sorry.
Sometimes people say, oh, even though it's not always been a hundred percent perfect, so let us double check that we haven't missed anything.
Well, we still will be doing it impressively, so are we happy that we were pressing, and, um. Yeah, but basically, we did press it, I just email checked, and I'd like some comments from, um, not just me, points and councillor Donal, and points. Councillor, and Davies, and so that's okay, so that it's not like one person, and the mayor, if she, that she's optimistic, that they've got a day, it's like just one person.
Press releases, do you?
Yeah, I just like.
A long sentence from each of them. If it is just.
No, but I think the way I would envisage it, it would raise this, raise that, raise that, and together with.
We can go back to the accessible tour that we did, go back to that day.
Happy to do it, but, um, I was trying to be more inclusive, you know, yeah.
Do that. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Well, that's done then, and we're working that out, indeed. If you get any email saying you want to, if you've got your comments, put them in tonight, and we'll, we'll work those comments in press release that day, there's not just my views. My very comments, and Louise was able to translate in Norfolk.
Can we just don't agree with you in press release, please?
Very good, Tom. Made Norfolk English, and, um. Right, um. Item nine, the letter from the, um, BBC. Um, remember we just, I'm concerned about a lot of, um, coverage. It seems to be talking about their future plans and, and how they want to manage their broadcasting. And alludes to. That they believe that they'll be able to do more and better with less. And, and if that's my reading of it. If I've read it completely wrong, are they happy to be chastised to that view, what members feel about the response to town clerk?
Um. Yeah. Well, I guess I thought it was a reasonable response, things don't stay the same. The BBC has got to be reasonable and manage their limited finances sensibly. And local broadcasting, I guess, was a casualty of that, although it's not gone altogether, it's just been amalgamated, so we're in a much bigger area. I don't know, I, I, I suppose I've got mixed feelings, but, um, yeah, I, I can see why they've done it.
And the, the concern I've got is that, that, um, we're on the, on the border between the two areas. Between the Box News and the Cambridge News, and those are the two local news services that are going. So there's, there's, there's no other local news services, um, which are, which are being, um. Um. Cancelled, whatever. Um.
There's the bit in the middle of the country, which is going, every now and then sustained. So if, I think, trying to interpret the view when we discussed it, where we were concerned that there was, not only one, I think it was councillor Davies raised the fact that the other area was shut as well.
Um, Cambridge, which will be going with Norwich.
Which is going with Norwich, and, and, and this was going to, and we'll be coming from Southampton. Well, I don't.
And both, both places are a very long way away from each other, and, and a long way from Buckingham, yeah.
And, um, yeah, and I think. Though we might accept their rationale, the way they manage their, their business affairs. I still think that with the contribution. But I don't know if they're going to understand that the bigs are used to contribute money to local journalists. And whether that's, um, something they're going to actually maintain, use to sponsor the local journalists. Um, now, they used to write local stuff for the press, um, they used to work for the John, um. Both Buck's Herald and Buck, and Buck's Free Press, and they wrote articles that they took in as local articles. I think. If I was to say we've taken on both the mayor's point, which. I think, if I was to say the same thing taken on Paul, the mayor's point, which is, you know, we can't control the BBC, that we should perhaps write back to and ask whether they're going to carry on the support uh, for local journalism that they give in local papers, which they started to do, because that goes as well. Then you haven't got anyone who's writing the real crucial story that people need to hear about. Quite often done by the local democracy journalists and, and we're all convinced on the benefits of that or, or receiving it, but it is good journalism. That whether people agree that, if they really would want.
I mean, I found the whole, um, letter quite di- difficult to understand what on earth they were saying. It's sort of, sort of jargon, you know, media speak. You know, talking about what's wrong, we, we will be reinventing our local bases as multimedia production centres. What on earth does that actually mean? And the media then keep moving quickly. What does it mean? And the decision follows years of audience data research and other metrics, matches the director general's digital first strategy. Or what does that actually mean, you know?
Well, you think we should include, have a deep hold of what they actually said then? Explain, explain English.
Yes, I mean, as communicators, they're not communicating to me particularly well.
I thought it was political, it was political, right?
And it, it also said, you know, it says that, that, um, it's what people have been asking for, basically, it says, and really, you know, to, to must the gen- to the general pocket, understand what's going on.
Oh, no. Now, to Donoghue.
Thank you. I think for a company that relies on journalism, they are not communicating very well at all. Totally agree with Susan's answer. Totally agree. It, it is, it's just conflap, it. They're not really saying how they're going to do it, it's what they're going to do, but not how they're going to deliver it. Like you said, Chairman, are they going to have a local journalist giving them information? Are they going to be taking things from social media? Are they going to be in contact with the university? You've got their own media department who do actually. But, you know, they do, yeah, they, they come to our events, they report on local issues. So are they going to be tapping into that? How are they going to be getting the news from Buckingham? That isn't explained in this at all. Um, so, yeah, I echo what Susan.
It would, it would be nice, I think, when he, 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 um, is here, um, um, cites that, um, the decision follows years of audience data research and other metrics and matches the director general's digital first strategy. If they'd have actually got some sort of link to the director general's digital first strategy.
Ever, ever detailed, ever detailed, um, yes, yes, um. Thank you, Paul. You're going to talk about something which these people have never been thinking about. We'd rather turn back to what Susan said about it being impossible to understand and what Lisa said, the company which is supposed to build on meditation. Um, it didn't really tell us anything apart from the fact that it's, uh, it's probably why I'm saying, um, jog on.
Go away, yeah. I've found it.
Oh, the digital first strategy.
Issued in, in May the twenty sixth this year.
Yeah.
A blueprint, blueprint to build a digital first public service media organisation. So I'm sure we'll all read that with great delight.
Understanding the BBC. Good, the top of the class then.
Uh, though I think, I think the issue is that, um, people of younger generations than mine, shall I put it that way? Probably aren't watching much live TV at all. And, and aren't getting their news from live TV.
Yep.
They're getting it digitally. And I guess this sort of decision reflects that.
So everybody else who's over fifty five, thanks for paying the television licence or not, pay the television licence, yeah, a lesser service then. I think that's what they're saying. Um, so are we agreed then with the points, I think, correct or wrong? Would you think the letter could have been worded easier to understand about what it was? We would have liked a copy of the digital programme in it and would seek reassurance that they're going to carry on, um, supporting, uh, local democracy quarters.
How are they going to do that?
Do you think that's reasonable?
Yeah, the, the issue goes on to radio as well. Local radio is a really important thing. Uh, I listen to the three counties' radio quite a lot and I know that the JBS, the, um, one of the presenters there, is always, local radio is having to absolutely fight for its life.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it has had the axe hanging over it for quite a long time. And, and I think, again, with radio, BBC doesn't quite know where they're going. They don't care about losing us, um, um, loyal listeners. They aren't thinking about the young ones that they're not getting at the moment. So we're not the baby that's being thrown out with the bathwater. It is quite concerning.
Yeah, and so this, rather like the dummy down at the best of time, and it's, it's, everything's got worse, hasn't it, in the sense of maybe? Okay, so we're agreed then, I think that, that we write back to them and based upon their response. And we'll bring back their response to a future meeting.
Great.
Um, and, um, and hopefully what they send back to us is more informative
Yeah.
than this. And, um, I couldn't explain this to somebody in street.
It's, it's not accessible for all.
No, that's a very good. Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, I think we're there. We were getting there. Yeah. I know, we'll never vote then. The record for any of you, we all know when we meet up, it's like, you know. You're quite right, it's chat diary, and I enjoy it. Um, item ten, um, another difficult sort of, so this, the, the response to do with the, um, its penalties and the alcohol licences, the, that they said at the bottom of it, they're going to consult with members once received. Well, I haven't had anything yet. Um, and perhaps they're avoiding me, perhaps I won't get consulted because only part of my area is in the town centre and maybe they've consulted with other people who haven't consulted, who knows? Um, and, um, being that I wrote them in the first place, saying exactly what I thought. Um, and I raised that with the previous town clerk, which, I imagine they know what I mean. Um, so anyway, any views on this, please?
Well, I think, I think, um, it was me that brought, brought to attention of the council that, that these signs had gone up because I, I spotted one, um,
By what?
By the Mitre, by the railway bridge and was like, I'm sure that wasn't there the other day. Um, and was quite, I was quite taken aback by it and the wording of it, um. So, yeah, then put up without any, any knowledge or consultation with the, with the town council. Um, just, um, appeared. Um, and as it says here, and like the, the wording of it is, um, is, should we say unclear, um, it's, um, not, um, actually stating, um,
What do you meant?
What, um, how, how the law actually, um, applies to, um, the, the, um, the issue.
Yeah, that it represents. Any other views on how we proceed with this, because clearly we have very little influence on how this is going to go forward. But my, my assumption would be, still corrected by any of the members, that we write back to them saying we know the correspondence. Town clerk.
Just to clarify, so, which is obviously my freedom of access, um, who was involved in this. He has been involved in, he was asked to comment on the consultation and the wording there is what he has put forward for that consultation, which is now collecting there, obviously collecting that information and putting to the conclusions. So we have, we were included in what was asked for our opinion and we have put forward quite a robust, or put forward a very robust view of what he wants and the fact we wanted to go back to how it was. So that, that is all in place and has been done.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
I would, I would suggest that, um, seeing that the signs are not, um, actually, um, telling the, the, the correct, um, um, information. That it can't, it would, it would be something that could be thought in courts, that it would, it was, um, if somebody, if somebody had been, um, fined, they could, um, they could probably argue that, um.
But it didn't work at all.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, that's all.
Exactly, it was actually the bylaw that was changed. Um, it was a bit of a a cut off when, I think, when we moved, I mean, Louise has actually said this, I mean, um, but when they moved to Umatry, they, they've tried to standardise the county without really thinking it through. My understanding is the, the bylaw itself was amended, so those signs are accurate as the law as it stands at the moment. And what they're consulting on now is what we want that bylaw to actually be. Okay.
Yeah, essentially in twenty twenty, when they extended it, they also changed its like, um, which was completely unexpected.
I think, um.
It's a consultation as well, it's worth noting, but when they, we do get the results from it, there was an appeal period. And if they're not happy with the outcome of it, we would of course appeal.
I think, I think I would look to go back to them and say, thank you very much, um, we discussed it. I, we wish, wish to be copied and want to the, um, to know the date that they consult the members, because they say the members, that could be anyone, it could be Buckingham Town Council.
Okay, Robin, that last line in the report, I mean, this is, this is my report.
Okay, which case it's not theirs.
Yeah.
I was enjoying that, fine. Um, in which cap, I'll change cap then. Um, in which, which case I think we should write to them and say that we would like to know at the earliest possible, our, our considerations of the previous town clerk's letter. And, and also the minutes of the decision uh, when it went in the cabinet members' decision note, which actually supported divisional change.
We're still waiting on the decision, I mean, not the top.
No, every decision of Buckinghamshire Council has to have a legal decision note. If there's no decision notice, which was part of the day this decision passed down.
You mean the twenty twenty one?
There will be a decision notice.
I think that is quoted in it when the date was.
No, no, there will be, the, an action of the Buckinghamshire Council. And you get decision notices, some actions are taken by cabinet members, because they can be taken, other actions are agreed in minutes. So all we need to ask is if we could have a copy of the decision notice, that the decision's changing, the date that it was. Um, this, I don't recall it, um, the decision notice, I would have probably seen it. And it would have probably, though I'm admit, I don't read everything, it's just a sort of feeling that would have flashed across my mind. And it was only that councillor Davies actually promised to our attention that we didn't know about this in the third place, you know, if you hadn't been for vigilance and seen it, um, we would have been in the dark period. Um, so I think if we write back to them on those sort of terms and say, you know, the outcome of it and, and the copy of the decision notice in the first place that changed for you. They'll come back to say that, oh, it's policy, that all policies should be X, Y and Z. And that decision was taken in shadow authority when they were drawing them together, that I do want to find it. But I served on the shadow of your screwing it in, I don't know what it is, um.
So it, it does say on the order, sixteenth of October, twenty twenty, decision made by the leader of the council.
Okay.
Yeah, I followed that, one of the links that was embedded in Louise's report and it does, and it does refer to Buckingham Town Centre and it does look as though, it looks to me as though it's all been done properly.
Okay, which, thanks for asking that one, always looking at that angle.
Councillor, we could just wait and see what they come back to us with. The consultation is in progress.
Yeah.
One of the officers involved is, you know, it's publicly questionable, individual, I don't think anybody knows.
I think, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, we can certainly ask for an update when they think it might be.
Because they didn't have a bearing on the way you wrote it. And, and, and Paul actually wrote to them because there wasn't enough time to agenda it, honest agenda at the time, because the agenda had gone out when he actually found out about it.
Okay, that's reasonable.
Okay, fine, fine, fine. Um, um, we'll move on, we'll move on. Um, the thing, um, um, we'll, we'll, we'll move on to item eleven, which is budget. Um, you want to just spend a little time looking at those, um, on a little bit page by page. Um, just generally what you feel about the common budgets that we've got. To start, they are what they are, they're going where they're going.
Is.
All right, they're page by page, not page by page.
Just clearer for the minutes, I think.
Clear for the minutes, okay, ladies. Number, number seven. Appendix E.
Page twenty twenty four.
And members happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go forward now with month, number seven, page twenty forty four.
Twenty one, twenty one, or twenty four?
Right, easy, yeah, you're quite right, twenty one.
Appendix C.
Appendix E, are we happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Wonderful, we're going to go, we're going to go, uh, now we're going to go to, um, twenty two or twenty, forty four.
Yeah.
Are we happy with that?
Yep.
Let me move on to, which is, I heard the name, Ian, I've heard that, um, which is twenty three or forty four. Are we happy to note those, because if that, if we do move those, we can do it, be the Sydney, coming to the committee.
Yeah, cool. Fine.
You happy with that?
Yeah.
Um, which goes, we'll just go further in page twenty four, forty four, are you happy with that as well?
Yeah.
Thank you. Now we're moving into code line, ending with page twenty five, forty four, happy to note those changes in code line.
Yeah, yeah.
Happy with that?
Yeah.
Right. Then the next bit is, I think we need to look at in a bit more detail, because it's the first page of our preparation for the budget here, um, twenty six of page forty four, and the recommendations in there, so, um. So one, one, a large, so that's, I don't know. If everybody can see, we'll have, then a little bit by, because we have spent, we've spent quite a lot of time back in the back, what we're calling, getting every word to you. To be the real candidate. Uh, who's going to lead, are you going to lead on it?
That's right, yeah.
I know. Plan, I just, I just was following the plan, happy.
So there are three parts to this report, two of them I think are very straightforward, so if it's all right, I'll start with those. We would like to merge the budgets for the scout parade, pancake race and May Day into a single small events budget. Mostly because they're generally about fifty pounds each. Sometimes you spend it, sometimes you don't, don't, and if we merge them together, we could just be a little bit more creative with that money if we've got some left over at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Um, secondly, as I'm sure you saw on page, uh, you know, because you just looked at that. Uh, thirty two or forty four, we have two budget lines for accessibility costs, which is just confusing. Um, this dates back from when payment contracts to access for all. I would suggest that we merge those two together, as an appointment, having two separate ones.
You having to agree that?
Yeah.
Hands on that, right, I think we've got that.
Thank you, Brum. Let's do straightforward this, the slightly less straightforward bit. This is what we're looking at now for our draft budget for next year, so it's the next financial year, starting April twenty three. T C and E is actually in a very good way in that the inflation that we've had this year has been slightly negated by the fact that we tended to order a lot of our stuff at the start of the year. So it isn't a huge amount that's going to go massively over budget, despite the fact that obviously, for Setters budget, he couldn't have anticipated ten percent inflation, right, so for the course of the financial year. At the bottom, the actual, I'm sorry, I'll explain that. So in first line, we have. So in the first column, we have budgeted expenditure, that's what Port Norton we would spend and budgeted for. Next column is the predicted expenditure. This is what, having now looked at everything, I think we are actually going to spend over the course of this financial year.
Okay.
Which leads us to an overspend predicted by four thousand five hundred and thirty, which is a very small percentage overspent when you look at how much inflation has happened.
Yeah.
And it is mostly going to be on the wages budget. This is my best guess, because we still haven't had this year's pay award, which the National Encirculation agreed. So this is my guess on what I think it's going to be. So the next column, we have budgeted income for twenty twenty two and predicted income for twenty twenty two, which is exactly the same thing, but for our income rather than our expenditure. Um, there aren't any massive changes on that particularly. The comedy night, we made no income, but we didn't put one on, so there is no expenditure, so those two things balance each other out. Um, otherwise, I think the market is going to have a good year, um, but I'm not a little bit too early to speculate that we're going to have more than budgeted for, because we did budget quite poorly. So that's where we are at the moment, and from that predicted expenditure and predicted income, um, that's what I based on what I think we're going to spend next financial year. So I'm not basing it on what was budgeted for this financial year, I'm basing it on what I think we are actually going to spend.
Okay.
So they recommended budgeted expenditure for twenty twenty three. Big long column there, that's, again, and I've been honest, it is my best guess. I've been talking to a lot of other clerks, everybody's budgeting anything from five to ten percent. We've done, I haven't put a blanket percentage increase in, where we can, we've spoken to our suppliers and asked them how much they think it's going to go up. We've looked at things such as fuel costs and areas where we do that, or rely on outside agencies, they're more likely to increase more highly than events where we run it ourselves, we have greater control over cost and expenditure. So what I will put next to it, obviously, the recommended budgeted income is exactly the same process for our income. And then for absolutely every line, I put notes in, I keep saying I honestly, it's too much. Put in what I think, um, sorry, my reasonings as to why you think this is going to happen. Um, so they're all fairly straightforward, the hanging baskets, I don't think it's going to change, because we've got an agreement in place with them, so no roughly where that's going. Um, some others have slightly higher increases, I'm trying to find something that's obvious. Different running costs in some places, there are some where, for instance, we've got a flags budget. I'm proposing that we reduce it slightly, because our flags are in good order, we bought a lot this year for Jubilee and the at the Queen's funeral, so I don't think we need to spend as many next year, where I can bring things down without affecting our services I have done. So this, this is what we are proposing, and I'm really keen to hear your thoughts and views on, on any of those changes I've made.
Um, right on that.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Claire, for the way you've done this so thoroughly. Just really to make a general comment, because of the um situation we're in as a nation, as a world, to be honest, and the cost of living crisis that we're facing. I just think we've got to be very careful to show that we aren't being profligate with our uh preset, and even though it's a very small percentage of what people pay in their council tax, I think it's still the onus is on us to show that they, that are the people who pay our preset in, preset in Buckingham Town are getting good value for money. And, you know, I do appreciate your thoroughness in going through this line by line.
Okay, we've got, the overall percentage increase at this time is, as it says at the bottom there, four point one nine percent. Um, obviously, we could, can reduce that, but something's going to have to give in order to do that. We aren't, um, for instance, the picnic on the pitch event that we did purely is a Jubilee celebration. So the proposal is that we lose, we save a little bit of money while doing that.
Yeah.
And there's a couple of places where we have a substantially marked reserve, so rather than asking the preset payer for more money for that, my suggestion on that is that we use some of our marked reserve, we've got bags where we can.
That's just cut the, um, when we discussed it, it was to try and cut the, every time we, we were discussing it, we offered to try take a bunch out of the budget where we could, and this is the stab at it. I think, um, took us quite a bit of afternoon, um, backing this backwards and forwards and, um, Louise, Claire and I, um, coming to this conclusion, but I think this is like the third edition, if we value the weekend meetings, happy to do so, we're proposing a group this tonight, which means at least we've got something tangentially in the bag, so that going forward, preparing some of the bigger budgets in the council, which would be slightly more difficult, at least we know what this one is, and it, it makes it, um, more saying on everybody else who's got to prepare their budget, that, that they have a similar approach to what they're doing to what we have here, which I can assure you, we've made savings. Um, and Claire, we have, she said we have no control over wages and we want to pay wages period, and that's a necessary cost. Um, and that's the largest part of our increase, everything else, as Claire said at the beginning, is static. I think to keep everything where it is, and basically that, um, four point nine is probably mostly wages. Um, and would that be unfair?
There are some other things, so where, for instance, we hire skips or staging toilets, we have to anticipate that those costs are going to increase. Where we can, we've spoken to them, the parent can't know now what they're going to, their costs are going to be in eighteen months' time, it's just impossible for them to have a guess. So this is, what I would say is, if you were to agree, if it could be agreed as a draft, because and lots of people will read to the assess in a few months' time, but hopefully, I mean, I had to write in here the new charge for the Jeremy Hunt, and I have no idea whether Jeremy Hunt is still going to be.
Maybe, if it's any cost like that, I'm sure Jeremy Hunt didn't know either.
No. I'm happy to propose that we accept this draft, Chairman.
That's definitely, yeah. An amendment to that, that we include in the minutes, the complete workings of this and the explanations.
Is that an amendment?
Well, no, I just want it included in the minutes.
Yeah, it's not an amendment.
You know, because I think that that gives an explanation, when somebody said to agree, we showed that we discussed it thoroughly, the town clerk has gone into it and it demonstrates what happened, but when somebody comes back and said, oh, well, you haven't done that, we clearly have done that, and you've discussed it as committee, as, as the town clerk, after the draft, we can go on that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're happy with that?
Thank you, ladies.
Yeah.
What I would say is, every T C and E between now and December two, January, I think we will or something to do with our latest divisions, because there may be some, some changes. It really is so, it's really difficult to be sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, your mark as well, and that's.
Oh, I was a big pain.
Sure you were, but thank you.
No, I, I didn't do the work on it.
Oh, yeah, honestly.
Yeah, especially if you keep saying I, because I'm also pretty busy.
And Louise, everybody was all good, and then one was, what was it, night, when I got there, everything was laid out to the Democrats, just about it.
That's good.
Very definitely, yeah.
So maybe I'll pay me now, Louise.
Town clerk is going to save money for the.
Thank you, Claire.
Right, thank you very, thank you very, very much, thank you, Claire. Um, if you move on to item cloud, the events calendar. Um, it may seem that often the sense in the events calendar, we've, um, we've got the chart there, first, because we've done it. Um, but of course, it's art in the market, which we're doing tomorrow, um. Event, I don't.
Page thirteen.
I'm on thirteen, the events calendar, yeah, right, if you have a look at that. I jumped three places there, in a rush. Margaret.
Yeah, just a question, thank you. Um, I can see we've got the twenty seventh of January twenty twenty four for Holocaust Memorial Day, but I haven't seen any reference to Holocaust Memorial Day twenty twenty three, or have I missed it somewhere along the line?
Very good point, actually, you made the.
Because this is the, the, the final two year calendar, isn't it?
Yeah, so this is very, this, this year.
Ah, sorry, yeah, I should have realised that.
That's okay, I originally included it and then I took it out.
Okay, sorry, I, I didn't think it was, I, I should have realised, it's not the way my brain works, that's the problem.
Probably five days down the road, we'll send invitations by half before Christmas, so.
Okay. But it doesn't seem to have been referred to anywhere, I don't know why, I just missed it.
It'll be in the next, um.
Well, it'll be the next events thing that we do, not the same way we do it.
Yeah, next forthcoming events, because apparently only goes up again in December, but the next one will go up.
Okay, so it just, it just slips through that little gap in the middle, okay.
If we try and keep forthcoming events on the agenda as short as possible.
Right, okay.
Um, Councillor Don.
Thank you, I'm, I'm a bit concerned with, um, two point three on page twenty nine. Um, the next skate park event will not be finalised until the new skate park is built, because we don't know when a new skate park is going to be built, and I, I think it'd be unfair not to put one on if the environment agency hasn't got it set together and sorted their side out, that our young people are going to, um, miss out on what is a good event because of things that we're not in control of.
Why are you proposing?
That we put one in the date for twenty twenty three.
A dating as, as a lever to get an answer, that's what we're trying.
Boy, even if it's not built.
Please.
So there were some concerns from the providers, um, at the last skate park event about the condition of the skate park. So we would have to have the specialist Buckinghamshire about it and mention its work, I think we will be agreed that we would have a date, um.
I'm, I'm happy with that, because I was there, so, um, we're there every year, so we hear the complaints from the young people, especially the users, so I would just, I, I would worry that if we don't put something in for twenty twenty three, then nobody's really going to be rushed doing anything.
Okay, well, anyway, I'm happy to second putting something in, remember, happy, but I do think we need to keep it under review.
Absolutely.
The other thing is that if we are putting it in, we will have to then think about getting some of the um, work done on it, which is basically some of the concrete's breaking out along some of the areas and.
Yeah, this Louise suggested.
You know, that they're even going to have to go and actually get it into condition that we can actually do it.
And that might make them hurry up a little bit.
Right on.
Pete, who runs King Ramps, moving to provide the skate park event, um, he was saying to us, wasn't he, at the event, that it's dangerous, that area where the concrete is coming up around the edges. Um, but he would be happy to be involved in the discussions with Buckinghamshire Council as to of the design of the new skate park.
That's past, that's already dealt with, so that's, that's way gone.
Way gone.
I think we need to, do what Louis suggests, we go to Buckinghamshire Council, we say, these are things that are dangerous now, because they were highlighted at the last skate park event, they need to be sorted if they're not going to hurry up and sort the new skate park out, because it's dangerous now.
Yeah.
It was dangerous six months ago.
You raised, between Louise and you, you raised the most important point, which is, we can't go dating it, because the skate park isn't good enough to run an event. Uh, that's what we advised, we were seeing, seeing, and we couldn't date forward an event, knowing that it was inferior, because you've all been advised that it is, I think, if you're happy to propose that, and I'll, this amount, which you said, you have to write to them, make them aware of the condition of the park, which is, um, and that we can't plan for event next year for two reasons, one, we don't know if there's going to be a new skate park, and two, if we don't know if it's going to be safe, the present skate park, if that's reasonable.
Absolutely.
And then for that response, we've still got time to plan.
Yeah.
Right on that.
Thank you, it just concerns me what I've just heard, if we're being told that by experts that it's not safe, why haven't we shut it?
Not ours. So this is very active, we have no legal responsibility, they should, we, Buckinghamshire Council, like we do with our players, there should be somebody going in there every week and giving a report on the condition of that skate park, like Risper do for us. They should be getting a report, and officers should be considering that report, but the sake of what we are not, is professional enough to say that we think it's unsafe, we haven't got informed the actions, they were asking them to look at it. Councillor Don.
I was just thinking earlier, how funny he was doing. Jinxed it, didn't I?
We're all going down here now. At least I laugh at myself. Carry on, Claire.
I was going to, going to ask whether, um, there was a report, um, from King Ramps, is it?
Yeah.
Um, about it, um, or whether we have flagged up their concerns to Buckinghamshire Council about the state of it. Um, I think we probably, probably should then put something in writing to Buckinghamshire Council, um, in that case.
But that's what Louise suggested, is we go to Buckinghamshire Council, we're thinking, so I'm happy to propose that, you seconded it.
But what we can't do is refer to a comic by a person who was employed by us.
No, we can.
But we can ask them, when did they last check it, to their concerns about the condition of the park. I think that covers that and that.
Absolutely.
Um, concerns, if it was ours, we, we probably would have took that decision that we said.
We would have closed it.
Um, so we do need to, and that might hurry them along, that.
Yeah.
Get it going.
That's what I'm hoping, because if they've got to spend money on what it is now, they might hurry up a little bit, who knows?
I don't know, I think, I think we should be asking for their safety reports.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or as short as they've undertaken, well.
No, we don't need sight of them.
Be lucky. Well, I saw where I wouldn't get to see it, um, as I called it, but, um, yeah, but I think you make a good point, so we can ask aside, because we told we don't have it.
Well, it's, it's our young people that, that, um, and who's, who, whose liability is it if, if, um, if there was, was an accident now?
Yes.
Just don't ask your own, isn't it, so?
Yeah.
They will have done.
But if we are aware that there, there are safety issues and we haven't plugged it up to them.
Yeah.
Are we, are we being negligent?
No.
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 And we have talked to them about the condition of the skate park.
Constantly.
Constantly.
That's why we wanted it replaced in.
I'd, I'd, I'd feel that we were being negligent, negligent, and I think I feel that it would be, um, something that I would worry about, um.
Leaking, we wouldn't, but yeah.
No, 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 but I do understand.
Moral, yeah.
Moral, in every, not saying.
Yeah. It is why we have been having constant conversations with them.
We haven't said at every meeting that we want them to shut the skate park down, um, but I do think that this is reaching a point where we need some clarity. So taking on board those points, I want to say what we're going to have to say. You've got, you've got to remember.
Well, we're actually going to get to that.
Oh, oh, you got it, okay, great.
We just asked Buckinghamshire Council for the most recent safety report on the skate park, based on concerns that have been flagged up over the years, and, um, we would like to see sight of that.
In, in conjunction with the danger completion.
Yeah.
Right, that, have you developed on that?
Sorry, just to clarify, I'm frank, you seconded.
Yes, frank seconded, I didn't, I've behaved, I've got my name wrong, so I was in a naughty fit, but, um.
No, it's so, don't be.
They whisked it back when they arrived. And can we agree the best kind of?
Yeah, thank you for the words on that, yeah.
Right, thank you very much, um.
So there is a lot of TV zero in there that will be filled out on this one.
Yeah.
Partner organisations, it is, it's been written report from the difficulty town clerk, and it's free.
Yeah, and so this is just part of making up in our arrangements with firm bodies, so exactly the same really as anyone who went through the broad review process with me, um, we wanted to put in place a standard, nothing between the people that we were regular. uh event studies support. Um, and just be quite a simple but clear document that needs to be agreed, uh lasting for three years and then we'll review it then.
I don't know. Is anything to be concerned about now? Very much, um as we, Louise has raised this about some of the things that we have a custom of practice. We need to be timed down so that there there's never any dispute over who responsibility some people is.
I'm happy that this recommendation goes to full council.
Well, it just did go really, what we can, do we actually call it, you know, commit in reading it?
Good, happy to.
They will, we'll have to explain the whole thing to all council. Everybody here understands.
Good. I'm happy to agree with that, then, chairman.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. You need to vote on that?
Play for the second of the benefits.
Uh, just a little change.
Yeah, just a little change.
So don't you.
That'd be.
Genius.
All right, okay.
We should just freeze them. Thank you, Louise.
Thank you. Um. Good day on representing the M side, sorry, just a bit of a, well, nothing. Thank you on that.
No, next gender wise and.
No, we didn't have a lot of things to say on that. Um, or anything. Um, sixteen, you've cancelled report, Deputy Town Clerk. Take this through.
Yep, so obviously I've been working on the um the project to get the youth council back up and running again. I had a meeting recently with some officers from Buckinghamshire Council. It turned out that they weren't wanting. Not the same, but it had some similar elements. So youth cafe, which is kind of like a youth council, but quite different. Um, and that's a very good opportunity for us because it means that we can potentially combine resources. Um, they're going to do a survey, which is very well put together. Um, consultation process with young people, but they're gonna make, do quite a lot of different things to make sure they reach all young people. And and they're happy for us to join in with that, ask some of our questions, our own branding. And then potentially use the youth cafe to um start, kickstart the youth council if you do that.
Yes, darling.
And we've got the uh first youth cafe task and finishing group meeting this Wednesday. Um, and it's a good opportunity for us to jump onto the questionnaire. And also with my youth park hat on as well, um to find out what young people in town want. Because it's all well and good, and I've said this for many years, it's all well and good, us adults sitting here saying we should have a youth council. But if young people don't want the format that we kind of want for them, then it's never gonna work. And it did work for a number of years, but um, you know, the young people that you kind of want to get their feedback from and voices heard on the ones that really wanna sit around the table and have a meeting. Um, so it's a good opportunity. Um, Louise and I spoke about it um on Zoom or Teams, whatever it was.
Everyone.
Um, and you know, we'll work, continue working together on it with the uh youth cafe idea that an adult.
Um, just general discussion around it. Around you happy with it?
Yeah, it sounds really positive, actually. A good way forward.
Answer, David.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Kevin.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Tell yourself that.
You know, Pauline is against law. But well, you know, actually, it's just, um, you didn't actually come into the same criteria. So we're happy with that. Then have you invited, is it a Zoom meeting or a public meeting? Because I haven't got one on my.
It's um, it's just a a group that has an interest in um trying to move it forward, that's all. There's nothing secretive or you just.
No, I'm about to be talked about.
Just do that, Alice, if you want to consult me, I shall send you the link.
Yeah, it's on my um, it's on my list.
Good, okay.
I'll see you on Wednesday. Um.
So when you have that meeting, is it gonna be specifically about Buckingham or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a Buckingham, Buckingham Business Community Board, which is the remit of.
The youth cafe being.
And the youth cafe is a project that they've decided to try and push forward with. But of course, um, everything everything else, um, they need that to try and finalize. This is something that there was funding for, for the green. So they can get on with it. The next funding year might be more challenging. Um, so we need to get this forward and better off for the people, because Captain Don, you've been um, putting a penny's worth into this for a very long time, so um it's gonna be good. So are we happy to propose and second that and agree?
Yeah.
You can second this one. I only did one to prove that I knew how to ever to walk. Because I've been told that I didn't. So the proposal is tender.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
It's good, but it is. Um, right, okay, we're moving on with the new cap forthcoming event. So I slipped into prime uh accidents. Um. Obviously, we're done with the chart there. Um, and thank everyone involved in that. Tomorrow, we've got um art music in. A half. A half in the market, uh which is from one three point four. I should probably pop down and um and join in that. And and then.
It's actually dry, so.
Exactly, I love the weather.
Ask if it's wet, what's the?
With watercolour, so we're fine.
If the weather is calling me bad, obviously we cancel it, but we do have the gazebo, so if it just rains a little bit, then we're just. Oh, thank you very much. It's great for you, Morgan.
Oh, no, thank you. I appreciate the comment. Um, I'll put it down as a point. I scored once tonight. Ten, one. Ten, one. Um, uh, okay, right. Um. So we do that tomorrow. How do we disco? That'd be at Lais Hill. The one which is more important, I think Lisa might want to say something on that. Which is why we moved the date a little democracy with it. Talk a little bit about that music, because it's been involved in the conversation.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, it was moved because um they were too busy to do anything of short notice. So we've moved it, um as you can see, till the fourth of November, and we've decided to move next year's date so it doesn't clash with the opening of the fags. It always did. And we did it for a reason, because that was a local democracy event week. But it doesn't have to be during that week. So we've moved it on purpose next year and this year for obvious reasons. Um, and it'll be held at the Royal Latin School and um we'll we'll email out further details.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we know what the theme is this year?
It's environmental. Again, it's the same as last year's.
Oh.
It's like, come up with a different theme, which takes it to be that.
The theme's one for two years. It's, we follow the guidelines of the European um local democracy.
Mm hmm.
But what's always quite nice is that quite in some ways, environment's got a pretty poor deal in the most recent. Um, it seems to have dropped down the priorities of um, which are priorities now in to make the needed. But I don't think it's in any way dropped down the young people's priorities of what may see going forward, so.
I was gonna, I was gonna say as well, depending on um the questions that they come up with, I did suggest to um Louise and um that we, this year, we maybe invite um people from the railway walk or the Buckingham Canal Society because they're actually involved in local environmental projects. Um, the edible garden environmental project. So instead of having um it all town and district councillors or shy councillors, that, you know, we maybe go out a little bit further because it is environmental and um, you know, the environment is important, local environment is important. Um, so we'll we'll wait to get the feedback back from the young people. And Amanda, Louise and I will um see who we can invite.
I think at this stage, I think in the fourth of November, um, actually, it's uh, it's what I get me, and and I was conscious um, that that I know before I opened last time.
I was in the hospital. I know nothing about what happened last year.
Can't quite, um, have a put it, they said, um quite heavy for the councillor's point of view against what the young people desperately want. Um, and have a put it, um, we were getting lots of policy procedures responses to young people. And I'm like, you, you probably agree with me, it's all must be about the youngest view alive, not the adults view alive. Um, because that's why it's better. So if we're giving light in there, what what are they gonna be there to?
No, this is my idea of going to the railway, going to the organisations rather than the councillors. So the local organisations that deal in the environment, the local environment, they they might be able to even get some volunteers to their organisations with the young people around. I think if it's shy councillor heavy or town councillor heavy, then we might lose track on um their engagement a little bit.
Louise, is that thing?
Yeah, potentially. Um, we did talk about it. Did you, have you had a question back yet?
No.
No, no. So maybe we can look at that once we've got the questions back.
That's what we're gonna do.
What do you happen to um?
I think we should invite um maybe Lee, so that he can come along and talk about liverings.
Yeah. Thank you.
But then that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, thank you. Uh, you know, you, I think you all know I don't have a great memory, but having been to that local democracy week event last year, which was focusing on the climate emergency. I I actually remember it as a very positive event.
Good.
And I don't recall it becoming heavy at all.
I think you understand what I'm saying. What I meant is that um, when I started this event with John Burke many years ago, the great thing that it was meant to be an interaction between young people expressing. And we ended up with um, question and answer session, which is now available, it's never been a part. But the great thing is, they come out there, it's only the person with you. Um, um, but I don't think it was negative um in the sense that we were getting government policy given to
Yeah.
Um, in responses. I've got a good memory of what was said, not even word by word, but um.
Hopefully this year it'll be a bit lighter, maybe get some volunteers for the organisations.
I I can actually remember being really encouraged by the passion of some of the young people. And I know Nina was involved and and that led, and Bethany as well, and I think that led to an interchange between them and them visiting the schools, unless I'm remembering incorrectly. And I, you know, and I I was just, I I wanted to harness some of that energy that was coming across.
Where that's unconscious that I didn't, how do I put it, from an elected member's point of view, I'm always conscious how that interacts with young people, uh which is a completely personal view perhaps. Um, but as we're going to be looking at outside people, and we're gonna bring them in today, that may envision your aspirations of getting something absolutely positive the way they were in goal, but the thing is, we don't even know what we'll be doing um towards the annual town meeting, but everybody would agree with that. But if it was something that played into that, we need to bring that energy to that as well as the next thing. But um so I'll be happy to go away and just agree that is what's been suggested. We come back afterwards now, because you might have a meeting tomorrow. But I didn't know anything about the suggestions, assistance, uh, but um that might come out tonight, but the bits about who was invited to the environment that that doesn't matter, as long as it happens.
I I do lots of conservation work with um all sorts of things. And my perception is that the environment is under huge attack from governments, rebuilding. Um, I think NEPR has very recently come out with a statement that um it should be regarded, uh, development should be regarded as a positive thing. Uh, I've I've not got the statement quite right. Um. And so I think there are loads and lots of young people that do want to do something positive. But there are these huge obstacles that government is putting up. So I think, I mean, in in their position, I I want to see government telling me why it's okay to keep building hundreds of homes on green fields.
It's a long place.
Yeah, rather than than the conservation volunteers coming along to say you know, we're doing great work, which we're doing. But the thing is, there's somebody else that's messing it up from the other side. I'd want.
I think we 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 need to know what Sheffield's policy is on the stuff, because you are, you make a really good one, because they have much message, but not a group. The 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 way that they're gonna look at the environment's changing and and the way that we like so, and now bad, when they third. And and the messaging that so would be not, and they still change the direction. That's fine. Look, we offer.
You're very good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
First names, Susie.
I think I think we we um can't really second guess um any sort of government policy at the moment.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. And I think we're getting a little bit over what this like democracy thing is for this year anyway. So if we can just make a move on.
Yes. Um. Well, I'm I'm happy with the discussion. I enjoy discussion.
I know.
Yeah.
Well, we have, but remember.
And I'll get up in the morning. I think the local democracy, I mean, we're looking at a huge development for Ozil Way. There's been some rumble builds, there's been nice hills, there's gonna be mates, more than phase three. I think it is relevant. Um.
It is, but we need to see the questions that come from the young people for us to then determine who to invite. And that's, I did say that from the very beginning. That we're waiting, we need those first, and then we'll see who to invite. So it's, that's why.
Are you happy that?
I think I think I'm probably second guessing what young people ought to be up, or I'm even saying what they're about to be up.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons we.
That's a trouble that I don't have.
County, darling, you said at the beginning, we've been second guessing what they wanted for so long, and that's what we're doing. The county, lots of things are changing. So we don't second guess, and we try to be a better way of communicating a bit smarter. Taking on board the um incorrect names, the um the extent, the centrality of the thing, we're happy to agree that um this is going forward as it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, bonfire night, I think we've um done, we've done. Remember, we've done.
Done.
Winter fair, I think the little bit that'll be done at Lais Hill. Has anybody got any concerns about that? No?
No.
Um, Christmas lights switch on. Are we meeting again with women?
No, no, we're gonna meet again tomorrow. Sunday, we're gonna be a couple of years, but probably Sunday, yeah.
Uh, which case? So which case, can you can you put members' proof about where we are with that? Because it was quite important to understand the difference in that speed.
Well, I put in a report last time.
We do.
The main.
Yeah, you have a main trade. You all read that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know that, man.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, community fair, um, that takes after Chris Parade.
Yeah, fine.
Happy with that.
Yeah.
Events review.
The Christmas parade in the next two or three weeks. I've been sending um emails out to everybody to see who'd like to volunteer into our show. Um, you need to be available though, nine in the morning to about one.
Now go to all councillors, by that.
All councillors, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So we just try to keep a track of this, I'm confident, um. I have to thank um, you know, what what happened in the charter fair, because we had um councillor. And Davis came down, I went down, we had Martin turn out um this week, first time it been down. And we even had.
And Andy.
And Andy. Andy.
And it's always out, every year.
Um but um. We thought we'd keep in touch with what's going on in the town centre. But it is also note that um retired councillor Bloomfield, he came out again um without being asked.
He went well.
Do I have to do it? Which is worth thanking me.
Absolutely. Even though he said to said to said to me, if you see see councillor Stutchbury, I'm not here, you haven't seen me.
Yeah, you ask different to him.
Yeah, yeah, and I I I said, well, if you see him, you haven't seen me either.
And he obviously walked by my house and it occurred to me, he always says, are you in? He always asked me if I were, if he walked by the house, and sometimes I've heard him say. I believe we've got a bit of humor going on there. Um right, that's fine. So we're on review events, um. Amanda.
This one is Band Jam, um it seems. Yeah, that was on the twenty eighth of August. Um there is a correction to make. Band Jam was actually opened by. Um councillor Stutchbury as chair of the committee, um the mayor and the deputy mayor were both away at the time. Um that was run by Lee Maloney again, who booked all the bands. Um I think with a couple of them, it was right down to the wire, there was some people that dropped out and. And there are other things going on, um but it was another successful event, the weather was good. Um and the playlist is published on social media and also I think Lee puts it up on the pub as well because he runs the new in. Um and I've noticed over the years, and I'm sure Robin has as well, that. People look to see when their favourite band is going to be on and that's when they turn up. So. Band isn't on till six o'clock, you may not have so many people up until about five. Um but yeah, there was good turnout, good support for the um last few bands. I think my favourite was Brothers Home Brew this year. But yeah, it was good, um. I'd say there was probably getting on to a thousand people there at any one point.
Man.
Yeah, letters were sent out to the King's Head, New England, the White Hart, asking them to send drinks in beautiful plastic glasses, which they did. Um and they've done that for a number of years now. And we asked Tesco, it's supposed to take glass bottles off the shelves, which nine times out of ten, they they do.
Yeah.
We did go in and check. Um letters were sent to all residents within the road closure area that the event was taking place, so everybody knew. Um yeah, so there was another good band jam. I think it rounds off the the summer nicely.
I think that was the thing that, you know, that I did front the house quite a bit this year as well. Um for some reason, I did a front of house and to closing and whatever, which was not what I was intending to do. Um the downside of that is that you're not still able to do so many other things, but the other side of it is you get to. Do what I have done in the past, which is start clocking the way you work the bands out during the day. Um and it's important to try to manage the times that the band's on, to try and make sure that when you're watching the clock. It's actually all the musical event, to make sure that you're watching the clock towards the, so. We did try to get a run, which is my fault because it was me who was keeping order of the the bands, but I think there's some things that we. Will look at in our planning in future years, just to try and make sure that, I am conscious that it's great for the public when we go run. It's obviously more pressure on the staff to um to get away.
Yeah.
It's my fault. Um and I didn't realise I was going to be doing that and my amount of practising. Timing bands and whatever and yeah, quite carried away. But um but it it went very well and I thank everyone who's attended it. And especially the people who stopped to clean up and um.
Give me a minute, a thanks then, and also for the minutes, just put that you opened it.
Yeah.
That changes in there. Thank you for doing so.
I mean, it's not, um. I mean, I like to talk, it's it didn't make a difference.
Absolutely, but still, it's every good minute thanks then. I I thank you for doing that.
Okay, and then we move on to dog show clearly with you. Yeah, go on.
Saying um that this is an area where we can work on, you know, and some of these things about how to be part of events work.
Yeah, yeah, good idea. We we had discussed that, it's that I think we need a. But both our music, because we, they they've grown over a period of time. And both our music events, and we haven't got, which Louise quite rightly raised, we haven't got a memorandum of understanding. Without a memorandum of understanding, you have to have a memorandum of confusion and disagreement. So that actually helps everybody. And we'd like it to be moving, I believe, to that we'd like to be doing a new partner organisation next year. On on Band Jam and so that's a good time to start um. Looking at how we have that understanding with the with new people and and because it's not putting it onto a previous organisation. I think we'll we'll bring us something back on that.
Yeah, we haven't been notified officially that it's going to be a new partnership. No one's approached us.
It was a lunatic.
We will uh we'll wait.
Yeah, but if it was a lunatic, it might be a new partnership. So in which case, those details will come to you when they are further and accurate, correct? But I do think we will thank um the Melanic's efforts in the afterwards and it's important we do that.
Yeah, that's very good, yeah.
Dog show didn't take place um for various reasons, um whichever reason.
Well, one reason.
Um we didn't feel, although I did get a complaint that. And somebody on social media said, Majesty the Queen would want to carry on with the dog show. Um I thought. Um so I didn't think it was necessary, but.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought it would be unfair, um even if it wasn't um. The the right timing, it was unfair on our staff to uh put that on them. Um I purposely didn't get involved in any of the online conversations. I put a note out saying it was cancelled. And um and then made the decision with the ladies here that we won't, we wouldn't then put it in um right now onwards because. Our programme eaten up uh through autumn winter is is very busy and again, it wouldn't be fair on our staff. So um I hope the members will agree the recommendation that we donate the dog food to Genadiah. And that is because the best before dates would, if we ran the event next year, it would give people about two months, I think it is, to use the dog food. And um as they've got a year on them, it'd be a little bit unfair that they'd have to use the dog food in that time, so they're fairly big bags. So um if we can agree to donate them to a charity, then I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. I think one of the, we can't, that's a pleasure, that's second. All those in favour, I need a minute for that, right, okay. Um so I think it's also worked out, and one of the reasons we didn't do the dog show was obviously the majesty.
That is the reason.
Halfway, but also we haven't got a room to vent the view of that in here, which would start could have been two places.
Actually.
Actually organised in that in town centre and organised in a dog show. Um so that's why. Uh one of the conflict reasons, and I do think that we also didn't actually on the agenda, but I do think we also need some events team. Thanks to all the staff, what we did on that day, make sure it actually worked very well and a minute to our thanks. To the deputy mayor stepping in and 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 um on behalf of her mayor. Um and what they did, because that was a success, I think it should have been on our agenda, I should have seen that went on. Apologise for that.
There were so many people there, I think people were just, they really wanted to come together.
Yeah.
I was, I was amazed, I looked at how many people. Some were as well. Just to clarify that that will go on the next resource that the gender I believe is, because I'm under civic.
Okay. So let's start with events and then I'll start with budget.
Was it my decision?
Can I just say, it's not an event, is it?
It's no, so I think that's entirely appropriate, but it's it's not, it's fine.
Okay, I just, I was, wasn't told, but then what would have been, then my river rings.
It wasn't even.
No, you weren't even, no.
It's fine, that's fine. It's a right event. It is what it is. It's like, ready to go on.
But I presumed as it was intended.
Well, you'll know for the next one.
Yeah.
Now, let's hope that that we're not around to see the next one, you know what I mean? And it's a long time ahead.
We've got a.
I don't think it's going to be, I don't think it's going to be that long. It's it's seventy four, isn't it?
Yeah. The coronation will be an event.
Yeah, yeah.
But civic things like man making, for example, come to us.
Um we'll do the um River Rings, which was a civic event, um. Was a civic event and all the group and they talked or whatever, but it was um civically, civically successful. And um those who attended it were likely interested. And um and we did dance and love and tires and different equipment and bits in the river. And um.
And TV and headphones somewhere.
Uh TV and headphones.
Wow.
It was, it was um down the side of the um the Tendrick Road Bridge.
Good, wasn't it?
After we'd wandered off the wrong way.
When, when she hadn't gone the wrong way.
Well, we weren't given maps.
No, that's not. Anyway, talking about the river, we're. Now, yes, that will stay on topic. Um the river rings was, that was a, that was a stream escalation. Um but as I say, all come together very well, frankly honest, um. What I would say about it is, we have to be very careful what we s- we got there. And from the river point of view and the land point of view, what I could tell you, within the river, is people were setting tasks among the bank. About, oh, we want those trees removed, we want this trees removed, and why aren't you got to that? Well, if you're in the river, moving through the river and all, taking the stuff out, is takes time to get from one place to another. And we didn't get to the, when we got to the point of the. The land between the cricket club and that, we couldn't actually take that out because there wasn't enough time. Um there was the ambiguity of the ownership of the timber because it belongs to the land there and on the other side. And we were consciously, on the advice of our green spaces team, making sure that we put the timber, which was from the other side of the river. Back onto the ripe area owners' side as we took it out. Because quite frankly, I would, we're paying for the disposal and our staff are paying for the disposal of their roads. So I do think that if we come to that again. Um because we had people rushing back, saying, want you to take that out, want you to take that out, and if you're in the river, it's quite hard work walking along. And if you miss an area, you know, um you don't get back to it for several years. I think that we have to talk to them. And also I think it's quite difficult for the people on the bank to. You know, to see what's going on in the river, because those labs go along, actually fishing in the bottom.
Yeah.
As they go along, trying to find things, that's why they get tyres out, that's why they get bars out, that's why they get all the stuff out.
Yeah.
And because our river isn't crystal clear. But I hope we will, we we normally send them, Stossebaker. Um as we normally do, a letter of thanks and everything. And but it went very well and it was wet in the river.
It was beautiful weather.
I don't know what other people on the bank about it, about the comment in the river, what did you think and how about the bank?
I think, well, um through Borton Park, I believe the guides had done a litter pick fairly. Um close to when we went went through it, um so. We were quite pleased um that there was very little um rubbish for us to pick up on the bank. Um there was a group that went off um and did some list picking around. Um other areas of Borton Park because there really wasn't that much for us to do on the bank. Um with that, and we were trying to haul out the stuff that that you guys in the river were. Were finding, but it was um. There were, there was nowhere near as much um. In the stretch that we did. Um there's there's more um trees and branches that needed um um thinning out rather than um rubbish and debris. Really.
Yeah, I agree with Fran, it wasn't about more tree branches, I mean, the section that we were in. Um normally we would go from the bypass bridge down to the cricket club, but this year we didn't get. We got as far as the weir, really, didn't we? I mean, um then the guys in the water got held up. But Fran and I, um I think you, we walked down this at one point, we did walk further down to see what it was like. Um from the weir to the cricket club and one of the um guys from Stossebaker came down with us and said there was no way they could have got through. Um that section from the weir to the cricket club because of all the overgrown branches and and everything. So that's why I've recommended that next year, yeah, next year we start from the weir and carry on from there.
Yeah.
But it's going to be a hard, hard time.
I think it's a good point, um. I do think that we need some clarity on, because I do believe. That we were going to chase it with the environmental agency, the ownership of those trees, because. We 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 haven't got, when we move them, got to put them back onto somebody else's land. And they are big trees, aren't they, these?
No, I think that the environment agency are actively chasing out. I know it seems like it's been a really long time. But we have had various updates and we know that they are continuing. We cannot remove those trees because we can't do it without going to the so we would not be doing that. Um we have to be patient and wait for the environmental agency. I think that's.
Thank you very much. I think the good, my trying to communicate probably not very well, that the communication from the bankers, why aren't you removing those?
Yeah.
And 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 it all gets very much, and we drew a hole at that point because. If we'd have started touching one bit of those trees, we could never have done it. It'd taken us two hours to do that and we hadn't got the equipment. And and cutting through with that bit with a little hand saw, it's sort of not feasible. Um but I think, can we, can we believe minute that the environmental agency is looking at that area? Thank you. Um. I was, I I haven't.
I think it'd still be there.
What is capable of doing and and yeah, leaving the bit against what was in that and strengthening that really wouldn't have done it. Um chart with the charter fair, obviously, thank you for everybody, as I said, anyone who was involved in it. And thank you for the officers' time and thank you for Mr Marshall, who's um. Who who, which is adequately um martial and um and we got to see all the people come through the fair, like Mr Tunx. And um on the first week. But it has been a another um successful fair and we must um know how professional the showmen are. And how well they operate and how they spend a lot of time keeping to do with the water we take through, which. People are probably aren't aware that we can safety walks. I didn't do it this Saturday, but Louise and Amanda. Were doing the walk through to make sure the matting's down, make sure the cables are covered, make sure that if the new drivers come in. To make sure that we've got all the insurance certificates, to make sure that that's in the office, to make sure they're actually in date. Um that we know that everything's covered so that when we retreat from the fair, and in the control of the. Showman and the fair people that are the community concerned, the operation of the fair, everything is covered. And we know that when, and if there is something to write, we go back and correct it.
And let's mention what. Nice. Um. It was lovely when um the grandchildren were in.
Um it was lovely when the grandchildren were introduced. I've not been before, so I'd be in the news then.
Yes.
Introduced those children, the next generation.
The reason, I was told the reason that the children all went up together was because Loren, the little girl who had the flowers, they weren't sure she was going to hand them over. Yeah, so they thought that maybe she, she would do better if her brother. I suppose someone there, yeah.
It was pretty sweet.
So she probably thought they were better. Um maybe your dream, why wouldn't it?
Absolutely.
But it was a splendid day. Whatever. What we did do is, we'd like to, someone posed a minute, our thanks to everyone.
Absolutely. Happy to pose up.
On the second. Right. Well, on that. Thank you. And we'll bring, and we'll bring back a further report.
Yeah, they'll be.
A further report later in the year, or later at the next committee meeting, if there's anything we need to bring back.
Sure.
Um so that it's done properly, that'll be detailed, if you want, if you know about at the moment. That agree?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Which brings us on to nineteen access, which is, does anyone got any access issues that we need to raise? Well, we really don't, and I have a sense that our press release.
Yeah.
Do earlier.
Great.
That will, and that's where this came from.
Yeah.
Members happy with that?
Yeah.
I'm not, what I am concerned about, since we have no councillor Australian Clark coming from the access awareness, but we can get things fed into all the committees from there.
Do you have Ryan that's on the group though?
Is it Ryan?
I just like haven't met. That's the, that's the thing.
Yeah, they seem to volunteer to be on the access awareness group.
Haven't met.
They just haven't met. So that's why there's not.
That is quite concerning, because they've done so much good work in the town. The point you said about the access awareness day, that that came from them.
Yeah.
And the point that why so much has happened in the town, why the council moved. And why we've got to which are.
That's just.
Activity ability.
Yeah.
It all came from the efforts of the access group, where agents with the council, making sure that when we took.
Bind.
We were bound into the whole principle of improving access. So it is important that they do. Can we just, with agreement, rights and seasons, um thinking of that, when they're writing to me again.
Well, we can ask Ryan. He's on the group. So he can maybe find out who is.
We can ask him, but we've got it on the agenda. We just might to them, ask them, is there anything we can do? Um or any issues that they are aware of. Ryan and stuff, they haven't met, but they might write back to us and give an explanation to that position.
Who are we writing to though?
Well, I'd urge you to draw whoever was in charge.
Chair of the committee.
Chair of the committee. And if it doesn't come back, when you establish the bigger offer of the community, that access grid all the way. Um and Brian can't do that if they haven't met, can't report back to us. So are we happy to just write to them?
We can find out who it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it'll go on the environment committee, and it would count.
I think it was a lack of people not going to the group is why they weren't meeting. There was a lack of participation at the heart. Ryan more than happy to be part of the group.
But he's not.
We know, yeah.
A quite naughty role.
No, he's on the group for us.
And we have a bit of difficulty to write to them now.
If we find out who it is.
I was just gonna say, do you have an action from the Equality Group? Should you contact them anyway? So if I just log that in.
That's good. Brilliant. So they're thinking along the same lines. So that's.
Yeah.
I'm just conscious that we need to get those reports, that, that information. Without that, we wouldn't have changed all these things in town. And losing that drive is a bad thing. Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Climate emergency, then you've got the report. Um going on there with the new action today, I don't think there is. I think with that, that's the campaign or that's what we're doing. Um are you happy with that?
Yeah.
And then my good mare, I thought she brought her something we hadn't done. Are we happy to know that?
Yeah.
Okay. Which case, that brings us to the press releases. We've done that.
Yeah.
When you read that press release, is there anything other members which could comment on? Um if you need to do a press release on, because there is particularly, are at this point in time. Um obviously, we will agree to, there will be standard press release, stand up and bonfire. And that is, and, and when we come up to Christmas lights, we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah.
And then we've established that at the right time, but that is we've done automatically.
Hmm.
Okay, so I'm, like the chairman, I'm going to say, apologise for getting these names wrong. Getting stuff in the wrong order.
That's all right, Brian.
You're saying, you've been waiting, waiting for that one, haven't you? You're storing that one up.
As, ladies and gentlemen, a sense of sensibility, we're cautioned about our own responsibilities. It's always important. And thank you very much for coming. And which case, date of the next meeting will be on the 12th of December. And is this, is there a full catch after that? Or is that the last meeting before Christmas?
No, that'll be one on the nineteen. Environment on the nineteen.
Oh, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I, can I just, just point out that the header on the, the paperwork is still saying, um, town clerk, Mr P Hobson.
I just noticed that. Literally pointed that out earlier.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's just.
I've got emails that are, which are communicating. I don't know how to change. Yeah, that's great.